Call this meeting to order. My name is Jason Morrissey. I am your moderator this evening. Thank you all for being here. As is the tradition with most select board meetings, we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance. And I'd like to ask Joe Krasik, who is the current chairman of the board, to stand and lead us in the pledge.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in its name, one nation under God, in the individual, with liberty, justice, and law.
Thank you.
As also has been the tradition quite often in the last few years, we have some special guests with us tonight. Joe Krasik has asked to take a moment to introduce Scott Legacy and the Mount Anthony Wrestling Team.
Thank you, Jason. Coach Legacy, you out there and you ready to go? As you all know, this weekend, our Mount Anthony Wrestling Team, once again, are state champions for the 26th time. And I've asked Scott to bring the team in here today so we can recognize them while they're on television, Cat TV, and let Scott say a little bit about what took place at the state championship. So, where's Scott?
They're on the first floor.
They're on the first floor. They're probably out of shape from all those wrestling they do this weekend, right? Hey, Coach Legacy, if I can have you come right up here to the speaker, please? Still not yet, huh?
They're up.
I can hear them. Here it comes. That is quite a feat, ladies and gentlemen. And I know we've been following the Mount Anthony Wrestling Team for a number of years. And more than just a trophy and a victory, it's the quality of young men and women that Scott and his coaches have put through the program over the last 20 years. It's just a super program. So, Scott, will you come up here to the mic? Scott, would you also come up here to the mic and let us line up in front of you? You're up here. Let's have a round of applause for the coach and the coaching staffs for the great program they have here today. And what I've asked the coach to do is introduce his assistant coaches, and then talk about this last tournament, and highlight any activities that took place here and some of the great wins we had, Scott.
Well, thank you for having us. First of all, before I introduce people, I just want to speak a little bit, and I hope I'm not out of line. But as you know, we won our 26 straight state wrestling championship. And although people think that's going to happen every year, it's something that we don't take for granted. So, these young men and our coaching staff work hard year-round, and it's not an easy task. So, I'm not sure if the assistant coaches will come up here and step up here. I'll introduce them, and then I'll go through each team member. Because I'm having trouble seeing you from back here. So, please, they're as humble as myself, and they don't like to be recognized. But we have DJ Schaefer, Dan Pierce, Frank Nada, Becky Noize, and there's quite a few coaches that aren't here at the moment. So, we have from grade seven through 12, about 14 coaches that show up every single day, and 10 of those are volunteer. And they're there year-round. So, I'm going to start here introducing our young men. We have 106 pounds Calvin Call. He was the state runner-up. 195 Tyler Madison, he's a two-time state champ. 170 Damon Young, he's a two-time state finalist. 160 Jacob Woodside, just finished second in the state at 160. Our little 99-pound varsity guy and JV state champ at 106 Ashton Schaefer. Two-time state champion 132 pounds Dylan LaFountain. John McCurry, who was sixth in the JV states. And the reason we have JV and varsity here is we're only as good as every single kid on our team. And we totally believe that. There's no superstars on our team. The JV kid that comes in sixth is as good as the varsity four-time state champion. We have Kobe McFallon right here, third in the JV states. Vince Pagan, this is how deep our team was. He was fourth in the varsity states this year. And this year, he was a JV state champ and stuck it out. Moses Rose, state champ at 120. Tabor Watson, standing next to his battle mate, which was Rachel Hale. Tabor Watson was second in the states at 126. And Rachel Hale, as you all know, has brought a lot of fame to our program. She's a two-time female state champion and the first female wrestler in Vermont to win over 100 career wins. We have Bailey Willard, he's a three-time varsity place finisher for us and was fourth in the states. His brother Jett, who is very important to us, he films all of our matches, Jett Willard. Noble Shaler, 152, state runner-up. Darren Ruiz Sauer, 145, state runner-up. Austin Condo, next to him, 145, third in the JV states. And another reason the JVs are here, they won their 25th straight state championship as JVs. Austin Pedigas, third in the JV states. Dylan Fletcher, JV state champ. Nick Todd, who is one of our managers for the JVs and videos. Mariah Sauer-Yurkey, one of our statisticians. Megan Saunders, another statistician. Austin Price, two-time state champ. Troy Gasaway, three-time state champ, heavily pursuing Jesse Webb's all-time win record. Standing next to him, our four-time state champion Jesse Webb, who just set the state record in wins, and I think it's at 228, 229, somewhere in there. Jack Luciano, state champion this year. Jesse's twin brother, who was a year behind him in school, JV state champion, poor Webb, can't wait till Jesse leaves next year. Next to him, varsity state champion Tyler Waite. JV state champion Jordan Peters, one of our injured wrestlers, Nilo Chichararo. JV state runner-up Sebastian Roker, and JV state champ AJ Wright. And we're missing a couple of guys, but these are the people that represent you. As you know, we just finished the state championship, which was held at Mount Anthony. We were proud to host it. One of the things that we were most proud of is the fact that along with the snowshoe event going on, we filled the motels and the restaurants around the town of Bennington. And our gym was pretty packed. We're getting ready to go defend our New England title down in Providence, Rhode Island this Friday and Saturday. And we're looking forward to it, and we hope to make Bennington proud again. Thank you.
Scott, give us a round of applause for all these great folks. So, Scott, we don't want to jinx the team, but we're all confident you're going to come back like you did last year. And two weeks from now, we have a parade here in Bennington. We're hoping we're going to have a float with all of your wrestlers on air. Whether you win, lose, we're going to be behind you. But you've won the state champion, we hope we're going to have that parade. So, the outlying towns of Woodford, Shasberry, and Pontle, besides the ones in Bennington, all members of school, come here to this town and really congratulate your program. So, thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much. Do you guys have anything to say? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Joan Paceino wanted to say a few words about homestead tax filings as a reminder to the town. So, Joan, would you come to the microphone, please?
Thanks, Jason. I just want to remind everyone that by April 15, everyone has to file their homestead. It's the Form HS 122. And if your household income, household income, is $105,000 or less, file the HI 144. That is what triggers the state payment for you to receive. Again, it has to be filed by April 15. After that date, you will be fined by the state for not filing. So, please, the ones I'm concerned about are the elderly. Check with your neighbors, check with relatives, just make sure that everybody's filed. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. For many years, at least in my experience, Jim Colvin had a tradition of taking just a moment of silence to recognize those in the town that we lost this year. Many people will recognize the fellow who this report is dedicated to. Norman Gredeberg was one of the most prominent Benningtonians. This is who this year's annual report is dedicated to. But for all Benningtonians we lost this year, could we just please take a moment of silence? Thank you. I will now read the warning, and I will summarize the many ballot articles at the end. The warning for this year's town meeting reads as follows. "The residents of the town of Bennington qualified by law to vote in town meeting are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Bennington Fire Facility on River Street at the Lincoln Street entrance in said town on Monday, March 3, 2014, at 7:00 p.m., or immediately following the Bennington School District's annual meeting, should that run over, to transact the business specified to be done from the floor. If you are a resident of the town of Bennington, intend on being present at the meeting, and if you are hearing impaired, arrangements will be made for a sign interpreter to be present at this meeting. For necessary arrangements, please contact Stuart A. Hurd, Town Manager at the Town of Bennington offices, 205 South Street, Bennington, Vermont, 442-1037, not later than Friday, February 21, 2014. Following the completion of such business, the meeting will stand adjourned to Tuesday, March 4, 2014, at the Bennington Fire Facility on River Street, again at the Lincoln Street entrance. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. for the election of officers and for voting on all ballot articles specified. However, those on the checklist to vote in the Village of North Bennington shall vote for the election of officers and on all ballot articles at the North Bennington Village Office on Main Street in North Bennington, also commonly known as the North Bennington Train Station. The Bennington Fire Facility above mentioned is hereby established as the central polling place for those on the checklist to vote in said Bennington. The deadline for registering to vote is February 26, 2014, at 5:00 p.m. at the Bennington Town Clerk's Office. The following three articles are business to be transacted from the floor this evening. Article 1, the town report, to hear the report of town officers and to take appropriate action thereon. Article 2, to determine select board members' compensation for the next year. Article 3 is all other business that is properly conducted at a floor meeting. I remind the members of the audience, under the other business, the only actions that can be taken at this meeting are under Article 1 and Article 2. No other binding decisions can be made from the floor at this meeting. Tomorrow at the polls, there is a total of 12 articles to be balloted on. In addition to that, there is a select board election. Two select board members residing in the town shall be elected for terms of three years. Please note that there are six candidates, you may place two votes. The 12 articles are summarized as follows. Article 1 is the general budget for the town of Bennington. Article 2 is in regards to the potential bond for the expansion of the water system in the area of Southern Vermont College. Article 3 is for $3,150 appropriation for Project Against Violent Encounters. Article 4 is an appropriation of $4,500 for the Vermont Center of Independent Living. Article 5 is for an appropriation of $7,200 to the Green Mountain Retired and Senior Volunteer Program. Article 6 is a question on a $7,200 appropriation for the Tutorial Center. Article 7 is a question on a $7,500 appropriation for the Bennington Free Clinic. Article 8 is a question on $7,500 for an appropriation to Brock Community Action in Southwestern Vermont. Article 9 is a question on a $7,500 appropriation for the Southwestern Vermont Agency, I'm sorry, the Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging Incorporated. Article 10 is a question on an $11,000 appropriation for Bennington Project Independence and Adult Day Service. Article 11 is a question on a $21,600 appropriation for the Visiting Nurse Association and Hospice. And Article 12 is a question on a $25,000 appropriation for the Bennington Coalition for the Homeless. We will now proceed to Article 1, to act on the town report and to hear the report of town officers and to take appropriate action thereon. Are there any questions for discussion or any motions to be made? Mr. Bombard, you're recognized. Please step to the--
Yes, I did a couple of questions. And the one that's been bothering me for a while, why, I guess this was brought up before, but why am I forced to donate to charities that I may not agree with? Why can't I pick my charities instead of having them picked for me? Anybody answer that?
Well, you can vote no on any of these articles.
But if I vote no, and the majority vote yes, I'm screwed.
No democracy.
Yeah, that's democracy, all right.
Very much so.
I disagree.
These are agencies that provide a service the government cannot provide to our citizens of our town. Years ago, we incorporated this into the town budget, and you didn't know where the money was going when you voted the town budget. The town manager and the town select board passed it out. I can't remember the years, but probably five or six years ago, we changed that to where these agencies had to petition, go out to the citizens, get, I think it was about 500 signatures on the petition to be on this ballot. We thought that was fair, for the same reasons you're talking about. Let's say, I don't know, some crazy thing that's not on here was on here, and I don't like it, I can vote no. Now, if everybody else votes yes, obviously, that money goes there, part of my tax dollars there. But as our gentleman up here said, that's part of democracy, that's how it works. So, we think this is a fair way, at least you know where that money's going to go when the people vote for it.
So, that's really not part of Bennington taxes, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
This will not be, let's say any of these issues fall from the voters. That will not be added to the budget, so the tax rate will not be increased by, let's say, ones that are $7,200. You will not see the tax increase by that much. It will not be given out to them, if there's a no vote on any of them.
I guess I think I see what you're trying to say. My other question is, and it's not a question, I'm going to make the same statement that I had made, and some of you may have heard it, some of you may not. Bennington is a dying town, regardless of what you may think. We've lost tons of business and more going. People can't afford the houses they're in. Jobs are just not available. If you have a job, you're probably more than likely working more than one, just to make ends meet. If you're not in town or state government, education, or in the hospital, you're suffering. So, I wish you guys would just pay more attention to that. There's a lot of people in this town that are hurting. I know but a few of them. I'm not one of them, but maybe someday. Thank you.
You know, the loss of the notification last week of Plazant, obviously a serious blow. And we're working hard to retain everything we have here and encouraging new business. Last week, I went to Washington, D.C., and I was sitting down with Senator Leahy, Senator Sanders, and Congressman Welch. They're totally aware of what's going on here, and they're as concerned as we are. However, we didn't have the $70 million Michigan had to keep these folks here. But I will tell you, when I was down there, they are working. They've got their staffs out finding, searching, looking for other people that want to come to Vermont, want to come to Bennington. They know we've got a good workforce here, they know we've got a great location here, and they're working very hard to do it. Now, hopefully, we'll see at some point in time, and we have some things now that they're in winds. And unfortunately, when we know something, sometimes we can't make the announcement for a lot of reasons, because the company wants to come here. If it does that, it blows another scheme or something else they're doing. But trust me when I'm telling you, our congressional delegation's working hard, our governor's working hard, and so is the town to try to get businesses to come here, but just as importantly, retain the businesses we have. You may know that there was two Energizer plants in the state of Vermont two years ago. There's one now. The one in St. Albans moved south. We were lucky to hang on to Energizer. So far. You know, one of the things you may or may not know, I'm working over at a veterans home, we were pretty close to losing that two years ago. And so far, we're there, we got the money. But that's 218 jobs that we don't want to lose in this town. And that's why I'm kind of stepping down from here so I can focus more time over there. But we're looking hard to keep these jobs. We know it's important, and we want them to come in here. We understand your comments about schools and things of that sort, but let me just say, I heard your statement, but I can tell you, having served in Montpelier, knowing what's going on there now, a lot of that increase is coming down from Montpelier that you're going to see on your school budgets this year. And I think it's a total of 12 cents that's coming from north, down here, added in the state school-wide property tax. So, I hope you consider that, look hard before we vote on our budgets tomorrow. Thank you.
The article before us right now is the town report. I know economic development is often in the news, but focusing on the town report, which is the question we're on right now, are there any further comments, any motions, or any questions? If you could please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Scott Malinowski. I'm from Sugar Maple Lane in Bennington. I have a question about Article 2, which is the town of Bennington securing a bond not to exceed 3.3 million for the purposes of constructing some water systems. I understand the town needs to secure the bonds for the building of this, but when the bonds eventually get paid back, will they be paid back from the water and sewer departments?
Mr. Malinkowski, if I can interrupt you--
I move we accept the report of the town officers.
There's a motion on the floor. Just to explain the motion, your comments, your question or your comment is probably ungermain as far as the town report goes, but in a few moments, when we're talking about other business, the business of the town in general, I'll be more than happy to recognize you to talk about that.
Okay.
But we need to accept the report and--
I didn't know if that was part of the report or if that--
It's difficult to follow sometimes.
Okay.
I can appreciate that, but I'll recognize you as soon as we're on that portion of the budget. There's a motion on the floor to accept the annual report. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. The town report is accepted. The next article before this meeting is to vote on select board members' compensation for the next year. Currently, select board members earn $1,200 per year. Are there any comments, motions, or questions about that article?
Who the same as last year?
There's a motion on the floor to accept $1,200 per select board member's compensation. Is there a second to that motion? Motion is seconded. All those in favor, please say, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 3, all other business properly brought before this town. I know, Mr. Malinkowski, you had some questions about the water bond at this time. If you would like to retake your place at the microphone, please.
Thank you for recognizing me again. My question was, with the 3.3 million, I understand the town needs to secure the bond. When that bond is paid back, is that paid back from the water and sewer department budgets, or is that paid back through the ratepayers? Is it paid back, or is it paid back through the general fund as a whole?
I believe Town Manager Stu Hurd would like to address that.
Scott, it is, in fact, paid back by the ratepayers of the water system. Several years ago, and when I say several years ago, I mean more than 20, the Bennington Charter was changed to specifically require that those folks who are not on the system, either water or sewer, not be, and I use this in quotes, burdened with the debt of that system. Although, the state of Vermont laws require that all voters, all property owners and voters in a town, vote on a particular bond, because we are actually using, the entire grand list of the town is collateral, that only those users will be required to pay back that particular bond. Years ago, there was a discount provided to rural landholders who were not on either system, and it varied depending on whether you're on water, or sewer, or both. And we did away with that system, following the practice that has become commonplace, and that is the user pays. And so, to answer your question, the water fund users will pay back the bond.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there any other questions or comments? There's a hand in the back. Could please come forward to a microphone and identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Abby Shapiro. And those of you who watch Cat TV, I don't get it anymore, because after the last water bill increase of 15% last year, I gave up cable. But I'm here, so you may recognize me from Cat TV. I'm going to read this, because I think it will be more efficient and faster than me just talking. And I want to preface it by saying, I think Southern Vermont College is an excellent asset for the community, but the fact that they are only going to be paying 22% of this rather large bond is a little difficult to stomach. I'm here to urge you to vote no on the upcoming bond vote. I believe the financing of this project is not well-planned. Water rates have increased 41% over the past three years to cover upgrades to the infrastructure, and no money has been put in reserve for this project. Whether it will be in the future has not been determined, and so we're voting on a lot of maybes. I believe that if this bond is passed, there will be no incentive to find any way of saving, and the burden will be borne by the water ratepayers. The bond will benefit Southern Vermont College, who needs to upgrade their system. The town has very generously asked them what they can afford. No one's asked the water users what they can afford. They just ask us to keep paying and threaten us with larger costs if we do not vote for this. Water rates are too high already. It is important to vote no, so that they understand we cannot pay more. This upgrade may benefit the hospital, who I've been told currently pumps water to the top floors for adequate pressure. But Southern Vermont Medical Center has not been asked to assume any of these costs. And it benefits two neighborhoods who supposedly have water pressure issues, but it's hard to find residents who will say it's a major issue. And finally, I was shocked to discover that all voters of Bennington get to vote on whether some of us pay more. This is not a vote solely for ratepayers. As Stuart says, this is mandated by the state, but it's still pretty hard to take. Communities have long given up the notion that only people with children should pay for schools. I propose the idea that there is a difference between paying for water use and daily maintenance, which I fully expect to pay, and paying for expansion and upgrade to the entire water system. The expansion and upgrade is something like schools. They benefit the entire community and should be shared by all. We are a hub, a small city, and the services provided benefit more than the homeowners or businesses that draw tap water. We have a hospital, grocery stores, we're a central area for medical services, rental properties, and many other services. Anyone who works in Bennington benefits regardless of what their water system is like at home, and as the rates rise, it makes it harder for a business to choose Bennington. A functioning, expandable water system is a community responsibility and should not be supported solely by the water users. Decisions made in 1980, 34 years ago, last century, need to be looked at by the select board. The select board is also the water board, so they are responsible for all decisions like this one. And perhaps that needs to be looked at as well. Perhaps we need a few more checks and balances. If you vote yes, you make it easy for the select board to do nothing more except raise the rates of the 3,000 ratepayers-- the rates of the 3,000 ratepayers in the community to fund a water system used by many. I urge the select board to rethink the way the water system is funded. By voting no, we ensure that the conversation will continue. Increasing water rates at this exponential rate discourages business and homeownership. We're trying to encourage business and jobs, but who would want to relocate to a community that is so casual about increasing costs? It is no surprise that the foreclosure notices are increasing. Many of us are barely holding on to our homes. This bond vote may not be the only increase planned over the next few years. There seem to be no guarantees. Voting no sends a message to the select board that something needs to change. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, or motions? Please step forward and state your name to be recognized, please.
I'm Dennis Whiteford. My question really is, what impact will voting no do to this? I mean financially, what happens if we vote it down?
Shall I try to address that? We are under a state mandate to address this issue of pressure in the higher elevations of our system by the year 2018. We must begin to address it by 2017. We have been, in a sense, holding the state permit, folks, at bay while we addressed other issues in the system, including the upgrade, the recent upgrade of our water filtration plant. If, in fact, the state holds firm on its mandate, in 2018, the town will be forced to be back before the voters with a bond issue to improve the system, either in this manner, but certainly in a like manner, to address the pressure problems in the higher elevations. And by that, I mean the areas around the hospital, Margaret Lane, Crescent Boulevard, Jefferson Heights, Greenview Drive, all of those neighborhoods there. And in fact, some of those homes were without water when the Laflamme fire occurred, and we actually had calls at the office complaining that we didn't have any water. And that's because the system does not provide adequate pressure and water capacity to the higher elevations during times of high flow. So, at some point in time, the town will be forced to address this issue. If we don't partner with the Southern Vermont College, folks, the cost to the, currently the ratepayer, will be more. It is likely the project will cost more in three years, and we're still going to be faced with a bond vote that's going to potentially raise the rates of the users under the current system. So I point out to you that, yes, the cost will go up. Without a partner, we will not receive the low interest rate opportunity that we have now because SVC is at a top priority list in addressing its own water issues. If this bond fails, SVC must go forward on their own, and they will, and address their water problems at the college, and they'll be done. That'll mean that we won't have a partner who's going to bear $500,000 of the cost. We won't have a new water user who's going to pay approximately $14,000 a year. We will simply be on our own as a water system. It is likely that the cost of the project will be at least $3.5 to $4 million, and that cost will be entirely borne by the users. And it is likely the interest rates will be higher with the Vermont Bond Bank or some other bank which will have to use because the low-interest loans will not be available to us because we don't meet sufficient criteria to get high enough on their priority list to succeed.
I see. So... I have a follow-up if I could.
One minute, Jimmy Carroll's...
I'd like to provide a little bit more information to the voters on this in addition. And it's important to note, SVC has given the town in perpetuity, that means forever, an easement on the property. And there's an estimate, just for that easement, the property alone, would be an additional $300,000 to the town. They've given that free and clear. So, when we talk about doing this at a later date, if this is rejected, add another $300,000 to that because SVC may not decide to give us those easements. And they may decide to charge the town for that piece of property.
Thank you.
I just have a follow-up too, if I could. And I don't know, going to your point, I don't know if eminent domain would fall into that anyway.
Not that far into the property.
I'm not sure. I don't know enough about it. But my question is, is that, given what has transpired over the last couple of years with the water upgrades that we've had to make, the infrastructure improvements, what is the likelihood that we can at least agree upon establishing a separate water board as opposed to allowing these types of things to continue year after year? Because we just went through a huge increase in the last couple of years improving our water system. And that's all I have.
Jason, may I comment?
Stu, you're recognized.
Over the last three years or four years, the select board has been faced with historically underfunding the depreciation of the system. Like all capital systems, once you build it, it automatically begins to depreciate. And if you are not setting aside sufficient funds to replace it, you'll find yourself at the time of replacement facing a very large cost. The select board, let's say four years ago, decided that we would begin to address a depreciation issue for the town, and began to set aside monies, not only in reserve, because we do have reserves that we have been attempting to grow within the confines of minimizing rate increases, but we also had to depress that, address that depreciation issue. And it's taken us four years to get there. Yes, the rates have increased in a percentage-wise dramatically. However, now that we're at that point or very near that point, we have to maintain those levels of funding in order that we not fall behind and find ourselves in a terrible situation. Had select boards in the past attempted to address depreciation head-on 20 or 30 years ago, we might not be finding ourselves asking for $3.3 million to address this problem because the problem has been identified that long. We just haven't been able to afford to address it. And we're now at a situation where the state has finally mandated that we must address it in order to gain compliance with state law. So, we find ourselves, having gone through a very difficult time, I can guarantee you, these folks sitting at this table as the water board do not take increases lightly. They do not simply pass them on. We have had, as a staff, we've had to struggle every year to convince the board that what we're asking for is appropriate. And in the past, the sitting members of this board have said, we recognize that, we're going to fund that, but we also recognize that we're shortchanging our ratepayers by not addressing the depreciation issue. And they've begun to address it. That's a responsible fiscal thing to do if you are operating a enterprise fund, which is a business fund. It's a fund which survives on its own monies. It doesn't reach out for other things other than grants and fees. And I think, and I came here in 1973 when there was a water board, a separate and distinct board that was operating the water system. And I can tell you that the water and sewer systems were running deficits. They were in the red substantially. There were several problems with that. One was the deeded gift restricted what we could charge for rates, and the water board was unwilling at that time to try to go to court to change that. We ultimately, when the select board became the water board, they went to court, changed the deeded gift so that rates could rise to address these kinds of issues. And I think, looking back historically, the select board's done a great job. They've kept the rates artificially low to benefit the folks who pay. And I think, you know, at some time, those kinds of things come home to roost. And I think the most recent boards have begun to address that question. And this particular project would not be before you now but for the fact that Southern Vermont College has the opportunity to gain access to very inexpensive money. And they have agreed to partner with us to allow us to gain that benefit. This is not to benefit the college. The college will borrow the money and do what they have to do to address their water problems whether we're there or not. So you can make your determination, recognizing that but for the college, this would be more expensive to all of us who are on the system.
Jason, I have a question. Stu?
Stu, are you...
I'm done. Thank you.
Jimmy Carroll, you're recognized.
Stu, what would the consequences be from the state if, in fact, the bond is rejected and we don't get this done by 2018?
Well, the state has a number of options. They issue us a license annually to operate a water system. More than likely, this would result in fines. We have failed to address the system. We're going to fine you. What those fines might amount to, I don't know. Would the state be reticent to fine us if we were really trying to address the issue? Probably, they would be reticent to do that. Their goal is not to endanger the water system, but their goal is to convince us that we need to begin to address these problems, and we haven't to date.
Greg Van Houten.
Stu, could you just take a second and explain where the SVC's share in the system was? I think that's a point that's out there from the infrastructure standpoint.
Well, it's a little complicated, and I would refer, folks, at the end of the meeting, if you want to take a look, that diagram at the end that shows the area in red, that is the shared portion of the system. What that includes is a pump station just off of Monument Avenue, near the athletic fields, a line running crosslots up to the college driveway and serving the gymnasium and the dormitories, and I believe the food service area that is now there. That is the part of the project that gets SVC the necessary water to address their problems with their current wells. They are participating at the level of 50% in the cost of that project. It's approximately $1 million. They're paying $500,000 of it. What goes beyond carries the water up to the tank that will be situated up above the former novitiate property. It'll be discreetly placed there, so it's not an eyesore for the college, but that cost is being entirely borne by the town of Bennington, except for the connection to the novitiate property or to the main building of the college, which the college will bear the cost for. The college will also bear the cost above and beyond the $500,000 for a connection to each of its facilities. So, the college has at least $500,000 invested in this project, and for that, they will be participating at 50%. Yes, it's not 50% of the entire project, but the entire project, the tank, in fact, doesn't benefit them as much as it benefits the system. So, we're paying for the benefit to the system. The college is paying for their benefit at a rate of 50% of the project cost. It's a mutual beneficial system.
Mr. Bombard, if you'd like to be re-recognized, please step forward to the microphone. Please state your name for the record.
Jeff Bombard.
Thank you.
Does the water include sewage also?
Southern Vermont College is currently on the municipal sewer system and paying, a rate-paying customer.
In relation to, say, the rest of the town?
Yes. They're currently on the system, so they're paying at the same rate that everybody else is paying for municipal sewer.
The other question I have is, what about some of the bonds that are going to be paid off shortly? Where does that money go?
That money will actually remain in the system. In fact, there is a bond payment that finalizes for the Burgess Road tank. I don't know whether any of you remember that particular part of the project to upgrade the easterly end of the system. That bond will be paid off in, I believe, at the end of 2015. So that money, and I can't tell you right off the top of my head how much it is, it's not significant now because we're at the end of a 20-year payment period, that money will remain in the system and more than likely be turned and rolled over to become part of this bond payment.
What about the firehouse?
The firehouse bond is a general fund bond, so it's not part of the water system bond, and it's not being paid by the ratepayers but by the taxpayers. And this fire department bond will actually be paid in full, I think, in two years.
And that money goes where?
That money then is available to the select board to recycle in the general fund budget, and the general fund budget is what pays for your fire department, your Bennington Fire Department, this facility, the police department, your administrative services of the town, the town clerk's office, the land records, the assessor's office.
But aren't we already paid for all that?
We are. So, effectively, I mean, I can't predict what a select board's going to do, but effectively, the board would have the opportunity to reduce taxes to the property holders when that bond is paid.
Working on the water thing if they have to.
Well, under the current charter, it would not be appropriate for the general fund to be subsidizing the water system because the charter prohibits that essentially. Because it was changed years ago because we were paying a discount to rural property owners that were not on either system, that as time changed, that discount grew to a point where it was incredibly substantial, and in fact, was causing an increase in the general fund taxes, essentially subsidizing people who were not on the systems. The idea was, let's change that. Let's pull those costs back to being systems costs. As enterprise funds, the water and sewer systems are technically businesses that act like a business. And so, their expenditures are wholly within their system. They're audited as a business would be, not as a general fund, which uses a, and Jason will remember, the modified accrual system, which...
I'm retired.
Yes. And I'm beginning to think that, my mind is as well, but the water and sewer funds are standalone systems. They're standalone budgets.
So we have separate wallets for different things?
Effectively, that's what it is. They are separate wallets, but I can tell you, from a financial standpoint, we pool all that money together to get a better interest rate at the banks we borrow from and the interest rates that we pay for borrowing.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to be recognized at all? Please step forward and announce your name for the record, please.
I'm Peter Brady. And I've just, you know, when this project was originally proposed, it was, the estimate was around $1 million. And years have just gone on and on, and we're now up to almost $4 million. And I think it's just one of those things where you're going to have to hold your nose and vote for it. What I would suggest, we have other problems coming up with the pipes on your Main Street. That problem's going to surface sooner or later. What I would suggest is that we go back to the Vermont Pure contract with Morgan Springs and renegotiate that contract. We are selling that for .04 cents a gallon. I think we could do better than that, and it would bring in some money to help out with these water problems. If we can't renegotiate it, then maybe we ought to build a bottling plant here, call it Bennington Springs, and start pumping it in on ourselves and selling it.
And have some employees working for us.
If I may, Jason, just to clarify...
You're recognized, Stu.
Thank you. Currently, we're in the 10th year of a 20-year agreement with Crystal Rock or Vermont Pure. When the town decided to attempt to bring a buyer for our Morgan Spring water to town, we reached out nationwide, essentially, to those folks who were bottling water. Crystal Rock or Vermont Pure was the only company that was willing to bid. They made certain improvements to the Morgan Spring pump station to allow their tanker trucks to back in and take that water. The original contract actually started at half a cent a gallon. After 10 years, I think we've moved up to 3/4 of a cent a gallon because the first 10 years were at half a cent, and now we've incorporated the cost of living over those 10 years. And now it will begin to move up annually based on a cost of living, Boston CPI, I believe it is, which is what Vermont uses. A person asked me what we brought in this year to date from sale of... A person asked me what we brought in this year to date from sale of the water. We had budgeted $35,000 annually for expected sales. We're currently at $48,000, and I saw a check come through today for $6,800. So Vermont Pure has found a client that is willing to max out their particular contract with us, which is for 100,000 gallons a day. They've never come close to using that much, and they're still not there. But the cost has risen. Our CPI impact in the contract is beginning to take effect, and we are, in fact, in touch, Peter, with at least two interested parties that we are attempting to do one of two things: build a small bottling plant here, because the capital cost for such a plant would be more than the $3 million we're putting before the voters this year. So we're looking to bring in the private investment to do that. We're also talking with a company about building a facility that would be off-site, off of the Morgan Spring site, where the trucks could load at a greater sequence than they can now. We can get about four to five truckloads a day in and out of our facility. It happens to sit in a neighborhood that, although just off Route 9, is residential in character, and we would prefer not to increase the demand at that location. So we are talking with two companies, or two developers potentially. Whether any of it comes to fruition is really going to be up to them, but we have been approached. We're happy to talk with people about increasing the use of that water. As many of you might know, there has recently been a push at the legislative level and at the state of Vermont to reduce sales of water from underground systems for fear that we are going to negatively impact the groundwater that's available to us all. But as I've said before, Morgan Spring is a wonderful water source. It contains or comes to the surface with about 2.1 million gallons a day, and for that, we should be very, very thankful.
Joe Krosick is recognized.
Just to add a little more to that subject, if you all recall, when the milk processing plant went out on West End, we did look, at that time, of getting that, turning it into our own bottling plant, but as Stuart said, the capital cost just wasn't there in everything we had to do. And again, we looked at how many employees it wouldn't really employ that many. At the time, we left the contract, so remember, there weren't that many water bottlers, but if you look today, the soda companies that are into it, everything else, and I seem to notice the price over the last 10 years of water in the store is starting to go down by the gallon rather than up. So I'm just wondering, how long is the guys that are out there, the small guys, going to continue? But we did look at Fairdale Farms at one time, you know, when they moved the milk thing. We said, well, that's an ideal situation, but the capital costs were way up there just to get it in there to do it. So we did think about it.
Remaining on other business, are there any questions, comments, motions, or any other business? Mary, if you'll come forward and identify yourself, please.
I'm Mary Garrish, and I'm here on behalf of and as a board member of Bennington Coalition for the Homeless, and I would like to thank every member of this town and every member of our government for all of the wonderful support that we have received. I think that the organization is doing a wonderful job in conjunction with our community partners in being more accountable to you, our supporters, and the outpouring has been tremendous. I want everybody to know that we really appreciate it and that there's still a lot of work to do on the number of homeless folks here in town, and so I ask your support on the ballot tomorrow. Thank you.
Please step forward and identify for the record.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann St. John, and I'm here representing Brock Community Action in southwestern Vermont, which is Article 8 on the ballot. So last year, Brock helped meet the needs of 2,613 individuals in the town of Bennington, as well as worked with 169 homeless families to find housing. Brock weatherized homes comprised of 140 individuals through our Weatherization and Energy Conservation Program. Brock's Child and Adult Care Food Program reimbursed 30 daycare home providers in Bennington for serving nutritious meals to about 300 children in their care. And Brock's Economic and Workforce Development Program worked with six Bennington residents interested in starting or expanding a small business. New this year, we have certified navigators for our Vermont Health Connect services. We have a supportive services for veteran families program to provide additional help to eligible homeless and precariously housed veteran families. At this time of year, we also provide free tax preparation services for folks, including getting their homeowners and their renters rebates. So we'd like to say thank you to the town for their continued support of these programs. This has been an unrelenting winter. We're continuing to do fuel assistance all day, every day. Right now, a single fuel assist is averaging $550 per family. It's just staggering the amount of money that folks are trying to come up with. The need is great here in Bennington, and so we'd like to continue to help people as much as we can in all areas. We thank you for your past support, and we encourage your voting for us on Article 8. Thank you.
You're recognized, Bruce Lee Clark. If you'll come forward and identify yourself for the record.
Sure. My name is Bruce Lee Clark. I'm the immediate past Chair of Greater Bennington Interfaith Community Services. I will introduce our new Chair, who is Charlie Jingo, and our medical director. We operate the Bennington Free Clinic. Our medical director, I think I've seen him here already, is Dr. Dick Dundas, wherever he is. There he is. Good. Want to thank the town of Bennington for its support in the past. Also want to thank the docs and the nurses of the community who come and volunteer their services and volunteer their time. You would think that we wouldn't need any money now, because of course, we're all now insured, and that's unfortunately not the case. And also, I will say that the folks at GBX and the Bennington Free Clinic have been also enrolling folks in the insurance programs, but there is still work that needs to be done. And it will be my fondest hope to come here and actually thank you all at some point in the future and say, we don't really need the 7,500 anymore, so we don't vote for us. But that's not this year, just so you know. We really do need it. It's a small part, but it actually does assist a great deal in helping your Vermont, your Bennington neighbors who come. About 80% of our, or more than 80% of our patients are from Bennington, the town of Bennington. So I'm hoping that you will, again, support us this year and maybe think positively about years to come, and we won't be asking for this. But this time, please do support us. Thank you.
Chris Oldham, if you'll come forward and be recognized. State your name for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Oldham from Bennington. I think this is a good opportunity for us, while we have this many people. I've never seen this many people at a regular Select Board meeting, but I think we should hear from the Select Board members individually so we can get an idea of what we should expect moving forward this year. So I'm hoping that, with the exception of Joe, and thank you for your service, by the way, if we can hear individually what is pressing on your agenda, what should we expect from you, and how do you plan on moving us forward?
I think next year, I'm still going to push forward with the merging of the two fire departments. I'd like to see that pursued. I think there's a lot of savings that can be had by the town and the rural district. So I think it's just something that we should explore and start having talks about. That's it for me.
I guess I'll go next. I guess my biggest goal with this upcoming year is to push the recruitment efforts, both commercially and industrially, for Bennington. I think people have seen that in the last few weeks, but it's something that we've been working on for a few months now, and developing an actual program, something that we can sink our teeth into, and hopefully, we'll start to show results. So that's my number-one priority. We can go into other priorities another time. Anybody that wants to talk to me, you can find me some way. I'll set some time to the side, and we can talk about what you want to talk about.
Of course, you know, it's a perennial issue. I'll just echo what John just said, and that is economic development. In addition to that, addressing our constituents' needs on a daily basis. I do that almost every day, as every other member here does. So that's it.
Sure. I'm going to actually go off of what John McPaddan said also, working to bring some business into Bennington. I really, truly believe we need to turn our economic development office into a full-time business recruitment, really recognize that there's people in Bennington that are hurting. The jobs are not here, and we need to do what we can as a Select Board, as a town, as a municipality, to try and foster bringing high, good-paying jobs into Bennington. That's going to be my number-one priority going in the year forward.
Me? I'm Greg Van Houten, if you don't know me, and I think one of the reasons I got on this is because I felt the Select Board needed to diversify in what our backgrounds were. Manufacturing is our second-largest employment sector. I'm in the, I work for, I own a printing fabrication company. I work with a lot of manufacturers in town. Since then, John's joined the board. I think that's great for going in this direction, as Justin and John and everybody's been saying. There are certainly a lot of people in Bennington, as there are globally, that have been hit hard in the last six years. Bennington's no exception, but there are some segments where Bennington is actually doing better than a lot of its neighbors. We need to focus on those things, identify those, and that's what a lot of the efforts have been this past year, which I'm happy to see. We do need to focus on our school systems. We need to commit to our education system. We need to commit to our infrastructure, and at the same time, not break our tax base. You know, as far as the water bond is concerned, we've, the town staff has done a lot of work. We've done a lot of review. This has been going on for a while. When I look at a house, the first thing I do is go in the bathroom, turn the shower on, turn the water on, and hit the toilet and see if the water pressure dies. You know, if you can't sell your house, that's a problem for our tax base. So we have to think of all these things as we do it. There are people in Bennington who are not hurting. There are people whose businesses are doing very well. We need to capitalize and see what they're doing, and we need to support them and keep them here. But there are also people that need our help, and these agencies that are on ballot articles are taking a lot of the strain off the government services to help these people, and any one of us can be in one of those positions anytime with a couple of short life events that can turn it over. So those are the things I'm working on.
Are there any other? Tracy Schwartz, if you'll please step forward and be recognized.
Hello, my name is Tracy Schwartz, and I live here in Bennington, and I love it very much. While I have everybody's attention here, the Select Board, and those who are running for the Select Board, good luck tomorrow, but I would like to urge you folks to shop locally and shop downtown. I'd like to see you down there, and when you think about going to these big-box stores, which we need them to, please come downtown first.
If there are no more comments, I know Stu Hurd wanted to be recognized before we ended this section of the meeting.
Thank you, Jason. And I trust my board won't take offense at what I'm about to do, but I would like to offer my thanks, and I sure, I speak for the board who's sitting here tonight. This will be Joe Krosick's last town meeting, although he has at least two more Select Board meetings to attend. He has served the town of Bennington for 12 years. I can tell you that when he got on the board and when he first ran for office, he felt that there were a lot of changes that needed to be made here. He may have even been a mayoral supporter. I'm not sure that he is today, although he's probably looking out at you and thinking other things. But nonetheless, I want to offer my sincere thanks to Joe for his support and for his leadership over these 12 years. His work in the House of Representatives clearly benefited the town of Bennington, and I think we all owe him a debt of thanks, and if you would join me in a round of applause for him.
Thank you, Stu, and thank you, everyone here. You hear candidates say it's a privilege and an honor, and I will tell you, it really is a privilege and honor to serve. As all you know by now, you know, I was born and raised here. I left here in 1965. In 1966, I went into service, and I came back home, made a conscious choice, come back to Bennington. One of my classmates, somebody you may remember, Denny Stepp, who went to school here, he lives down in Florida now, we were talking today on Facebook, and we're reminiscing, because we have a reunion coming up next year, how great it was to grow up in the Bennington area with the teachers, the coaches, the families, the friends that we had. And in Dennis's case in mind, both being a service, we've been all over the world. And Bennington's a great place. It really is. We have our problems, like every town does, but when we have a disaster, everybody pulls together. We've seen that over and over in recent years. And on a personal note, I want to thank you all for the support you all gave me while I was in the legislature and here. I'm not going away. I'm going to be doing more traveling. I have a daughter who's going to have a child. She's in England in May. I'm heading into Europe in May to see the birth of my first grandson. I've got two granddaughters, but now I've got a grandson coming. And the regiment I belong to in the military, Second Armored Cavalry, is in Afghanistan, are coming home to Willsburg, Germany, and they've asked me to come home, welcome them home in May, and I'm going to be over there then. Will I still be involved in the town? I'll spend more school board meetings than I've been in the past, along with Select Board meetings, and I would just hope that this town continues to support the folks we have at the north end of town, at the Vermont State Veterans Home. It's a great facility. We've been bringing a lot of legislators down here. I had two here Saturday. We gave them a tour. I'd never been here. We provide a valuable service. We're up to 140 residents in there right now. We're rated best-in-class out of the 140 veterans' home in the country. So once in a while, hiccups occur. Things happen. You hit the press in a negative way, but we've overcome that. We're working hard to make everybody proud of that. And as I said earlier during the meeting, caring for the veterans are important, but for this community, 218 jobs are also important. And believe me when I tell you, they were at risk last year, and they're not now, and we're going to continue to keep it that way. So thank everybody for the support, and I really appreciate it. I'm really proud to be a citizen of Bennington.
If nobody else is seeking to be recognized, I will entertain a motion. Oh, I was going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Meeting stands adjourned until tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m., when the voting polls open.